Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the May tenth, two thousand and twenty-one Pennington County Planning Commission Meeting. Recommendations from the Planning Commission on certain items from this agenda will be considered by the Board of Commissioners at the regular meeting on May eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, at ten thirty a.m. The Planning Commission utilizes speaker request forms which are available in the Commission chambers during the meeting. So if you're here to speak on an item and you are neither the applicant or the agent for that item, please fill out a speaker request form and give it to Jerry over here and she'll keep me organized here throughout the meeting. So agendas for the meeting are located back in the back bookshelf for anybody that's interested. First item on the agenda is the roll call for today's meeting. Note that Sandy and Kathy are gone. Gary's here from the board and that we may see Jim here in a few minutes, but he's currently absent. Item number one is approval of the April twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-one minutes. Are there any changes, corrections, edits to the minutes? Seeing none from the board, is there anyone in the audience? Hearing none, seeing none, I would entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second, further discussion for approval of the April twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-one minutes for further discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Item number two is approval of today's agenda. Items, the first items on the agenda is the consent agenda and includes items three through six. Normal items after the consent agenda are items seven through twenty-three, followed by our standard items to close out the meeting. Are there any edits or changes to today's agenda? Hearing none and seeing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Wait a minute, I don't think I'm doing a motion for you. I'm getting ahead of myself, apologies. Motion for approval is their second.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second, further discussion. Hearing none and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Brings us to the consent agenda.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brittany Molliter, Planning Director. The following items have been placed on the consent agenda for action to be taken on all items in accordance with staff's recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda by any Planning Commissioner, staff member, or audience member for separate consideration. The findings of this Planning Commission on certain items from this agenda are recommendations to the Pennington County Board of Commissioners who will make the final decision. Item number three is conditional use permit review, CU sixteen thirty-four, for Jessica Therms, to review a recreational vehicle to be used as a temporary living quarters for no more than one hundred and eighty days per calendar year. Staff's recommendation is to continue the review of conditional use permit sixteen thirty-four to the July twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-one Planning Commission meeting with one condition. Item number four is conditional use permit review, CU twenty dash zero five, for James and Melissa Moore, to review a vacation home rental in an agriculture district. Staff is recommending to end conditional use permit, CU twenty dash zero five. Item number five is conditional use permit review, CU twenty dash eleven, for Audra Olson, to review a vacation home rental in a suburban residential district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit, CU twenty dash eleven, with conditions. And finally, item six is conditional use permit, CU twenty-one dash twenty-one, for Larry and Ramona Vanderzee, to allow a guest house in Rancheck Residential District. And staff is recommending approval of the withdrawal of this conditional use permit, twenty dash twenty-one, per the applicant's request.
Thank you. Are there any items that staff wishes to pull from the agenda?
No, not at this time.
Thank you. Are there any items that the membership wishes to pull from the agenda? For those in the audience that are new to the meeting and new to this process, the consent agenda consists of items three, four, five, and six. Those items will all be voted on at the same time. Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to speak on items three, four, five, and six before we vote on those items with one vote? Seeing none and noting none, I would entertain a motion for approval of today's consent agenda, items three through six.
I move approval of consent agenda, items three through six.
Second.
Motion and second, further discussion. Hearing none and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Brings us to item seven.
Good morning, Commissioner Chutima Saboon, Planning Department. Agenda item number seven is conditional use permit, CU twenty-one twenty-two. The applicant is Elizabeth Ganade and the local contact is Charlene Bradley. Both of them are in the audience if you have any question. The location of this VHR is located at two-three-eight-two-nine Songbird Road. The property is four acres, zone, rural residential district. There are seven criteria for approving conditional use permit. The criteria is on the screen. I will read the staff response. Criteria number one, a vacation home rental takes place entirely within an existing residence and it should not be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare of the public. Criteria two, vacation home rentals are considered a residential use, therefore this conditional use permit should not change the residential use of the property and thus should not have any long-term negative effects on the use and enjoyment of other properties in the immediate vicinity. Criteria three, allowing this conditional use permit should not affect the normal orderly development or improvement of any surrounding property in the area. Criteria four, this vacation home rental utilized the existing on-site wastewater treatment system or necessarily utility appear to be in place. Criteria five, access is off of Songbird Road via an existing approach. Songbird Road serves five residential lots. It should not significantly affect traffic congestion. Criteria six, the current zoning is rural residential district. Vacation home rental are, vacation home rental is allowed with a conditional use permit in this zoning district. Criteria seven, the future land use of the subject property is also rural residential district, which allows for, for single-family residence as a primary use. Vacation home rentals are a necessary use that is allowed through conditional use permit. The property consists of a single-family residence and a shared with, and a shared. It also has a current operating permit. The request was routed for interdepartmental review. Accounting flood managers, that is a special flood hazard on the subject property. This is, this area is the flood hazard. The VHR, the vacation home rental is not within, within the boundary. No other significant concerns or objections were received. Staff did a side visit on the property on May third and verified that it meets all the requirements of section three nineteen. Therefore, staff recommends approval of conditional use permit, CU twenty-one twenty-two, with eighteen conditions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff on this item?
Yes.
Go ahead, Charlie.
Shootman, I've got one. If you look at the sales tax license, it's in, it's in the name of the contact company or manager, whatever, has to be in the name. I think our ordinance says it has to be in the name of the owner or applicant.
Okay. Let me.
Oh, yes, I just saw that. Thank you.
So our paperwork isn't in order yet.
Okay. Yep, which the owner is here too, so I can, I can.
Would you rather we listed that some condition that it can be taken care of so that we can move this along since the owner is an absentee owner, they're out of town?
Yes, but she is here in the audience.
Right, that's why I'm saying so that we don't get them here again.
Okay, yes.
So you're suggesting adding item nineteen?
Yeah, add just something that says that this needs to be taken care of before the CUP would be issued in this case. Okay? CU twenty-one twenty-two won't be issued until the owner gets, and I think they can go across town and get that handled. They won't have the hard copy in their hand yet for you.
Right.
I think they can get it handled.
Yes. So what about adding the condition that prior to an operation, the applicant provides the Planning Department with a copy of the sale tax license under the applicant's name?
Don't have any problem with that. I'd rather see it move along. Thank you.
Further, I guess I would go with further questions. We'll, we'll pick that up at the end with everything else. Further questions for staff on this item? Okay. Does anybody in the audience wish to speak on this item? Hearing none and seeing none, staff is recommending approval of conditional use permit, twenty-one dash twenty-two, with nineteen conditions, with the nineteen one being just added this meeting. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion for approval.
I'd still move.
Second.
Motion and second for approval, further discussion. Hearing none and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries.
Item is, is conditional use permit, CU twenty-one twenty-three. The applicant and landowner is Mark Erickson. The local contact is Graria Graff. The location of this vacation home rental is at one-three-five-nine-nine Highway forty. The property is eleven point six zero acres and zone agriculture district. On April twenty-nine, two thousand and twenty-one, staff did a side visit and found that both, both the residence and the bank house will be utilized as a vacation home rental. It does not meet the requirements of the section nine, three nineteen, due to the maximum number of bedrooms and occupancies. The more appropriate use for the, of the subject property should be a specialty resort. Staff has been working with the applicant manager regarding a new requested, new requested use to resubmit a, a conditional use permit to allow a specialty resort. Therefore, staff recommends to continue conditional use permit, CU twenty-one twenty-three, to the May twenty-fourth Planning Commission meeting.
Thank you. Questions for staff? Does anyone in the audience wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, hearing none, staff recommends to continue conditional use permit, twenty-one twenty-three, to the May twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-one Planning Commission meeting. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second, further discussion. Hearing none, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Brings us to item nine.
Item nine is conditional use permit, CU twenty-one twenty-four, to allow a vacation home rental. The applicant, the applicants are David and Kelly Larson. The local contact is Mr. Tim Brumba. The Mr. Larson is on Zoom today and Mr. Tim, he is in the audience if you have any question. The location of this vacation home rental is at eight-five-three-two Dunsmore Road. The property is one point zero five acres and zone suburban residential district. There are seven criterias for approving conditional use permit. The criteria are on the screen and I will read the staff response. Criteria one, a vacation home rental takes place entirely within an, an existing residence and should not be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare of the public. Vacation home rentals are considered a residential use, therefore this conditional use permit should not change the residential use of the property and thus should not have any long-term negative effect on the use and enjoyment of the other properties in the immediate vicinity. Criteria three, allowing this conditional use permit should not affect the normal orderly development or improvement of any surrounding property in the area. Criteria four, the vacation home rental utilized the existing on-site wastewater treatment system or necessarily utilities appear to be in place. Criteria five, access is off of Dunsmore Road via an existing approach. Criteria six, the current zoning is suburban residential district. Vacation home rental are allowed with a conditional use permit. And this lot size, the property lot size is one point zero five acres, which meet the required, the required lot size of the zoning district per, per the zoning ordinance section three nineteen. Criteria seven, the future land use of the subject property is also a suburban residential district, which allows for single-family residence as a primary use. Vacation home rentals are a necessary use that is allowed through conditional use permit. The property consists of a single-family residence and a detached garage. It also has a current operating permit and the request was routed for interdepartmental review. No significant concerns or objections were received. Staff did a side visit and verified that it meets all the requirements of section three nineteen. Therefore, staff recommends approval of conditional use permit, twenty-one twenty-four, with fifteen conditions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff on this one?
I don't have a question. I just noticed that under A, staff recommends approval of conditional use permit, I think it's a typo, should be CU twenty-one dash twenty-four instead of twenty-two.
Yes.
Noted, thank you. Further questions for staff? Okay. Does anyone in the audience wish to speak on this item? Mr. Larson, it doesn't appear that there's any questions. Is there anything that you would like to add before this is voted on?
No, I think that about covers it. Thanks.
Thank you. Seeing none and hearing no further discussion on this item, staff is recommending approval of conditional use permit, twenty-one dash twenty-four, with fifteen conditions. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second for approval of conditional use permit, twenty-one dash twenty-four, further discussion. Hearing none, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Thank you. Item ten.
This item is conditional use permit, CU twenty-one twenty-five, to allow a, the first thing I would like to correct the staff report under the recommendation A, so it should be CU twenty-one twenty-five instead of twenty-one twenty-four. The request is conditional use permit, CU twenty-one twenty-five, to allow a vacation home rental. The applicant is Jessica Hessler, Seven Wonders LLC. The local contact is Jade Tucker. The agent is Fisk Land Surveying, which Janelle is here in the audience if you have any question for this vacation home rental. It is located at two-three-two-two-one Black Forest Place. The property is one point zero five acres and zone suburban residential district. There are seven criterias for approving conditional use permit. Criteria one, a vacation home rental takes place entirely within the existing residence and it should not, it should not be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare of the public. Criteria two, vacation home rentals are considered a residential use, therefore this conditional use permit should not change the residential use of the property and thus should not have any long-term negative effects on the use and enjoyment of the properties in the immediate vicinity. Criteria three, allowing this conditional use permit should not affect the normal orderly development or improvement of any surrounding property in the area. Criteria four, the access is off of Black Forest Place via an existing approach. The vacation home rental utilized an existing on-site wastewater treatment system or necessarily facility appear to be in place. Criteria five, the vacation home rental has been operating since twenty sixteen with the previous approved conditional, conditional use permit and it, it should not significantly affect traffic congestion. Criteria six, the current zoning district is suburban residential. The vacation home rentals are allowed within a, a conditional use, with a conditional use permit. The lot size of the property is one point zero five acre, which meets the required lot size of four this zoning district per section three nineteen. Criteria seven, the future land use of the subject property is also suburban residential district, which allows for, for single-family residence as a primary use. Vacation home rentals are, are a necessary use that is allowed through a conditional use permit. The property is, consists of a single-family residence and a detached garage. It has a current operating permit. The request was routed for interdepartmental review. Emergency Services has a concern regarding an address posting. Staff comment, this, this will be addressed as a conditional use, as a condition of approval. Staff will inform the applicant regarding the concern from the emergency services. No, no significant concerns or objection to the conditional use permit request was On May fourth, on May fourth, the Board of Commissioners approved a minor plan, MPL twenty fifteen, to combine these two lot together, these, combine two lots into a one point zero five acre lot, which now make the, the subject property meet the minimum lot size requirement. Staff was unable to perform a side visit. The applicant provided pictures of the vacation home rental and support documents. It appeared that all requirement of, it appears to meet all requirement of section three nineteen. Therefore, staff recommends approval of conditional use permit, CU twenty-one twenty-five, with sixteen conditions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff on this item?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Charlie.
Kind of spoke with Brittany a few moments before and the ones we've already looked at, I have concern about multiple names of these things and this particular one's a good one. I count at least five different names that this vacation home rental is operating under. And then on top of that, we've got an area code that for some people, and it surprised some of the Commissioners, because up in the hills, this is a long-distance phone number from my phone and they're supposed to be within fifty miles. But back to the names, we've got Jessica Hessler, Seven Wonders LLC, there's two. We got Jake Tucker, there's three. There's another name, my friend in South Dakota, that's on the sales tax license. We flip over to the next page, South Dakota Department of Health Lodging License Application, Happy Jack Lake Cabin. And the same thing on the Department of Health Lodging License is listed as Happy Jack Cabin. We're getting too many of these names and some of them are LLCs. I'm not going to pick on you, but I think we've got to get in our system that we're looking at whether these folks have a DBA so somebody can find out who Happy Jack Cabin is.
Okay.
Or the LLC, an LLC in the state of South Dakota actually has to file a yearly report and operate in good stead with the state of South Dakota and it says who the particular stockholders or, or partners are and who the managing partner is and how to get ahold of them. But we're not doing any of that. And that, to me, I sat on the committee for vacation home rentals twice in a ten-year period. That defeats exactly what that committee went through from the people that were coming in opposed to them, as well as the people that were agreeing to operate within certain guidelines. But this is a particularly bad one. Five different names on the same application. I find that ridiculous. I'm going to vote against it just because of that. We're going to get it together. People cannot be picking these names out of the air so that they can't be located. You look up Happy Jack Cabin, are we going to find that in a phone book? No way.
No.
No way. So that, I, I just, I'm getting really concerned about that because the other ones all had multiple names too. Excuse me, two of the other ones, two out of the three had multiple names involved. That's not right.
So in this case, the property is actually owned by Seven Wonders LLC and Jessica Hessler, she's the partner of, of this LLC, so that's why I put two names in there. And then the local contact for each VHR will have the applicant or the land, the applicant and if the applicant is leave outside of the fifty miles from the vacation home rental, they need to have a local contact. And in this case, Jade Tucker, that is Jessica's daughter and she's the one that live in town.
I believe she lives here, don't get me wrong, but I'm saying to call her from my phone, it takes a long-distance number. It's that simple. And there's other people that are in the same situation over that. Not everybody has immediate access to Wi-Fi and internet. If you live where I live, if you don't want to spend a hundred and fifty dollars a month, you're not going to have your internet with any type of speed or service or anything else. Hundred and fifty dollars a month. There's a lot of elderly folks that will not fund that sort of thing. Those same elderly folks know that three oh eight is not South Dakota, so they're not going to dial it.
Would you suggest to have them has a South Dakota cell phone number or phone number?
I think if they want to manage these places... I think if they wanna manage these places, they assume, I assume they get some funding for that. They're paid. Yes, I do think they've gotta be local. We, we, we ask them to be local, but that wouldn't indicate that they're local. I wouldn't know that from Adam. And I don't have some goofy phone system. I got CenturyLink. And they charge me, and they charge me dearly to call that number. In-state or out-of-state, they charge me.
So will this apply to all vacation home rental?
We gotta do something.
Uh, well, that would be an ordinance change. So that was one of my next questions is.
I, I agree.
Are, are you, are, are you indicating that you'd like to add conditions on to this particular item? Um, or are you suggesting that we get together with staff and, and make those changes to the ordinance?
I'm suggesting, I don't know whether the LLC is running in good stead. And you guys have to review that. Whether you should begin to start adding those things into it. And if people have other names for their business, do they have a doing business as? Which is appropriate. It's a filing fee. It's done here in this county. And that's what I'm suggesting. We need to start doing that. And in this case, I'm not going to ask that a condition be put. But we've got, this is a particularly bad example of what I'm talking about. Five names on one application with a very contentious item. There's people that are not happy about vacation home rentals. I'll leave you there. So I won't ask for the conditions, Chair.
But I, I think let's add it to items from the members, or items from the membership, item twenty-seven. We'll discuss it with staff at, at, at that point, uh, to um move forward with the.
Thank you.
The questions. Thank you. Further questions for staff on this item?
Hearing none. Seeing none, looks like we do have a speaker that would like to speak on this item. Uh, go ahead.
Good morning. My name is Janelle Fink. I'm with Fisk Land Surveying, and we're acting as agent for Jessica Hessler. And I just kinda wanted to address some of Charlie's comments. And I can appreciate and understand the concerns. Um, as a consultant, if you are going to, and in my opinion, if you are going to vote no or deny um something based on the number of names in various applications, I think you have to unify your ordinance and change that first. I don't think you can arbitrarily say that you, everything needs to be under one or two or three names or whatever the limit is. If that isn't just, if that isn't prescribed in your ordinance, because people don't know and understand that. You have to provide that direction for them individually and for us as consultants as well. We need to be able to see that in ordinance and, and understand that and prepare for that. And in regard to, you know, I, I understand that some vacation home rentals are, are contentious issues. There were no comments on this, and there were, you know, several notices mailed out, twenty-four in fact. So there were quite a few people that were notified. There were no negative comments on this one. And then maybe just as an aside on the phone number thing, I think that if you look at phone numbers, people keep them personally, whether they move from state to state or wherever. And we see a variety of phone numbers associated with individuals and businesses that aren't necessarily a six oh five number. So I, I'm not sure that that isn't, isn't a changing or morphing thing. It's not as, as typical as it used to be. Um, so I, I would maybe question whether or not we want people to provide us a separate number if their primary number and primary use, you know, that's what they're providing you with. So those are my comments. I do appreciate, you know, your input. Um, just being able to represent clients, I wanna be sure that if we're making um additional requests, that those things get transferred into ordinance rather than just become individual stipulations that are arbitrarily applied.
Janelle?
Yeah.
If you had a business and you opened a business in this area, they're not going to allow you to carry your old cell phone number in. They're gonna give you a new business number.
It.
The people that you're talking about keep their cell number.
Yeah.
And they have a business number that's a local business number.
But the state of South Dakota, when you apply for your license, doesn't require that you have a local number. When you register with the Secretary of State.
Okay. But when people see a local contact and the only number that's on that contact list is an out-of-state number, I say that defeats the purpose of what the committee went through. And, you know, it, it, it was well talked about, the, the distance, the, the fact that uh, out-of-state ownership was going to increase everything. All that was brought up years ago. Now that's the more serious of the things. As far as the multiple names, I think we're dropping the ball. We have a responsibility to check these things. And especially in LLC, it should be in good stead, or they shouldn't be on the app.
No argument.
But you're correct. We don't have that listed right now, and I'm willing to live with that. But I'm not willing to live with an area code that attempts to defeat the local status of it.
And again, that wouldn't, would or should be part of the ordinance as well. If you're gonna require that, then that needs to be brought up and changed as well. So, and if you, whatever you deem appropriate, I can work with. But when it's a moving target and we don't know, then that makes our job difficult, and it makes it difficult for the applicants. So.
What if, what if we add this in there? Because you're correct, it's not in there. I'm saying it defeats the purpose of a local. If I look at, if I looked at this, I'd think immediately because of, and certainly because then it's gonna cost me money to call them. I'm gonna say, ah, you're somebody that's not local. I say it defeats the purpose and the principle. But I'm willing to go along with a condition or something so that they get it, but there should be a local number on there.
And I have no objection if that's what the commission and planning commission and staff feels that they wanna do. I just would like to see it in ordinance so people know and understand that that's a requirement of this.
I think it should be clarified, yes.
Yeah, that's all I ask for, so that it doesn't become an arbitrary stipulation applied to one group and not another. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Janelle.
Further questions on this item?
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Just a point of information. Considering the fact that we are short three of our members today, uh, do the applicants, and it, and it would require four positive votes for anything, do the applicants that are here today have the opportunity to ask for a continuance?
I don't believe that the applicants are here. I think only the applicant's agent is here.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I think it would, we did it on that last one. We added a condition. I think that's where I'm coming from. We need to change our wording. We need to be more specific. And I think we need to do a better job of checking these things out with the multiple names so that we're trying to stand behind our own ordinance. And what a long-term committee and commissioners had done. This went o- over years, both times. So I would add a condition that says they, they put in place something for a local contact that includes a South Dakota or a local number. They should be able to put that into place and still operate. There should be somebody here. I'm not sure that the person that has the cell phone with the three oh eight doesn't have a home number that's three, four, three, something.
My main concern is, is, uh, and I, I'm, I agree with the applicant's agent is that I, I don't want to put stipulations on that aren't um ordinance-driven. Um, where we would be, we were, where we would presume, presumably be um y- you know, doing something different on, on one application versus the other application, just from a fairness standpoint to everybody that applies. Um, that being said, uh, I, I wouldn't be opposed uh to it i- in this situation. But it's certainly something that needs to be um figured out on the ordinance.
I'm not aware of any other number per contact number that I've ever seen was an out-of-state listing. And I've been watching these. I've been involved in vacation home rentals. Uh, and I have my own thoughts about it. But I believe that defeats the purpose of what a lot of people did over a lot of time. That's, that's the only reason I oppose that. And how can we ask people to dial a long-distance number when we have in our ordinance that it's supposed to be a local contact within fifty? How do you do that? Sorry. But I am willing to put a condition in there, gives them, you the setup to, to get that number straightened out, but get them going with their license. But I, I'm, other than that, if, if we leave it like it is, I'm sorry. I'm opposed to.
So to, so to move forward, you, you would like a condition stating that the local contact have a local South Dakota number?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Anybody else have further discussion on this item?
Well, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Uh, under the circumstances, uh, needing four positive votes, um, I would, uh, I would support, uh, Charlie's suggestion um, in order to accommodate approving this particular agenda item.
Okay. Further discussion? Anybody in the audience wish to speak on this item? Okay.
Hearing none and seeing none, um, recommendation is for approval of conditional use permit twenty-one dash twenty-five with sixteen conditions with a seventeenth condition added to require a uh local South Dakota phone number uh for the local contact. Everyone clear on that? Okay. Um, is there a motion?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Motion and second, further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries.
Are you ready for?
Yeah, no, go ahead.
Item eleven is Comprehensive Plan Amendment CA twenty-one dash zero-six. To amend the Comprehensive Plan to change the future land use from Plan Unit Development District to Rancho Residential District. Staff is recommending to continue Comprehensive Plan Amendment CA twenty-one dash zero-six to the May twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-one Planning Commission meeting, but staff would like to change that date to the June twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-one Planning Commission meeting.
June twenty-eighth?
Yes.
I'd make that as a motion.
Second.
Motion and second to continue item eleven, uh, which is Comprehensive Plan Amendment twenty-one dash zero-six to the June twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-one Planning Commission meeting. Further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Item twelve.
Item twelve is Layout Plan LPL twenty-one dash sixteen to create Lot Twelve R revised, a Block Five of Northdale subdivision. Uh, the applicant's request appears to be in harmony with existing lots and current land uses. As the property sits today, it consists of approximately, sorry. Sorry, one point two four acres, and they wanna increase the size and create another lot A. Um, this property will have to be plotted within Mead County, um, in addition to Pennington County. Uh, this was routed around to the interdepartmental review process. There was item, one item of concern, or sorry, two items of concern that came back from County Highway. Uh, they are concerned uh that that proposed lot, A, um, the risk subdivision will be an isolated tract. So they would like to see that um access addressed. In addition, there are two approaches to this property off of Merritt Road and off Saratoga Road. Um, and they would like to have approach permits obtained um for this property. If you look here, um, there's one there on Saratoga Drive. And then if you look off to the left there, there's one off Merritt Drive. Uh, this property used to be a daycare center that was converted into a single-family residence back in two thousand fifteen. Um, other than that, uh, staff is recommending approval of this layout plan with conditions. Um, and the conditions being added that they address the two approaches and the potential isolated tract of that lot A of the risk subdivision.
Are those currently listed in the items? Are these are two new items you're adding?
No, those are actually uh as part of the recommendation.
All right, thank you. Questions for staff on this item? Does anyone in the audience wish to speak on this item? Hearing none, seeing none, staff or.
Commissioner, I just had one. Explain to me about the two approaches. Um, one of the, the understandings I've always had is that we do not, our Highway Department, Pennington County, does not like two approaches to one small parcel. And I thought one of these ends up in Mead? Or both approaches end up in Pennington?
Both of the approaches are in Pennington County. It's just south of the Pennington County line.
Even though part of it's in Pennington, part of, you're saying it's still, the approaches end up both in Pennington?
Yes, and so they'll have to be.
They've gotta give them one somehow.
Correct, so they have to go in front of the Board of Commissioners to allow the second approach.
So it's one per lot or revised lot, I guess is appropriate?
Correct.
Okay, I understand that then. Thank you.
Further questions?
Hearing none, seeing none, uh, staff recommends approval of Layout Plan LPL twenty-one dash sixteen with eleven conditions. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second, further discussion? Noting none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Item thirteen.
Morning, Commissioners. Jason Thenson, Assistant Director. Agenda item number thirteen is Layout Plan twenty-one dash eighteen to subdivide and create Rudd tract. The applicants and landowners are Alvin and Lois Rudd. They're in the audience if you have any questions for them. Other affected landowners are Stanley and Marvin Negabar. And their agent is Anderson Engineers. The property is located uh near Highway seventy-nine and Doffenbaum Road. The proposed lot size is forty point six acres, currently zoned general agriculture district. As it sits, uh, talking about two properties, uh, Lot A and Lot B that are on the screen on your left. Lot A is two hundred and eighty-nine point two-three acres. It is vacant of any utilities or structures. And Lot B is ten acres, contains a single-family residence as well as onsite wastewater treatment system. You can see the proposed lot on the right. Access to it will be via Doffenbaum Road. There is no special foot hazard area on the property. Like I said, it will become forty point six acres. It will contain the single-family residence as well as the onsite wastewater treatment system. The request was sent out for interdepartmental review and no concerns or objections were received. Therefore, the applicant's request to be, request appears to be in harmony with existing lots and current land uses in the area. And staff recommends approval with conditions.
Thank you. Are there questions for staff on this item? Does anyone in the audience wish to speak on this item?
Noting none, um, staff recommends approval of Layout Plan LPL twenty-one dash eighteen with seven conditions. Is there a motion?
Add so move, approval.
Tagging.
Motion and second for approval, further discussion? Noting none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Item fourteen.
Agenda item number fourteen is Layout Plan twenty-one dash twenty-three to create Lot B of Guy Davis Homestead. The applicant and landowner is David Stone. Surveyor is Bruce Engineering. Other affected landowner is David Homestead Reserve LLC. It is located at two zero 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 four Willsey Road. Proposed lot size is forty point zero one acres, currently zoned agriculture district. And that is what the existing land use is as well. As it sits today, um, the property on the left contains two historical structures as well as an abandoned single-wide mobile home, none of which are habitable. Uh, it also contains an outhouse that has been filled and is not usable. The other property, which is on the right-hand side, uh, contains a cabin placed in the nineteen eighties, and there's no means of wastewater disposal on that property. I believe that cabin was used for agricultural purposes, calving in the, in the season. Uh, access to the proposed lot will be via unimproved section line as well as a fifty-foot wide access easement. There is no, or the uh property is. access easement. There is no, the property is located in an area of undetermined flood hazard, Zone D. The request was sent out for interdepartmental review. County Highway had a comment that any roads built along or within the section line shall be built at ordinance 14 standards, and no other concerns or objections were received. With that, staff finds no significant issues with the applicant's requests. It appears to be in harmony with existing lots and current land uses in the area, and staff recommends approval.
Thank you. Questions for staff on this item?
So, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
So is the road at that standard now?
No, sir. What's being proposed at this point is that they will not improve the section line. If you look on the right-hand map here, the section line runs north-south. They'll actually connect to a private access easement here and go east to access the property. They don't plan to develop the lot at all. It's just to preserve the historical homestead, basically.
So if they were going to develop it at a future date?
Correct, then they would need to improve that.
Okay.
And that, we would catch that during the building permit process.
Thank you.
Further questions? Anyone in the audience wish to speak on this item? Noting none. Staff recommends approval of Layout Plan 21-23 with eight conditions. Is there a motion?
I'd move approval.
Second.
Motion and second. Further discussion? Seeing none, hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Item 15.
Agenda item 15 is Rezone 21-04 on Comprehensive Plan Amendment 21-02 to rezone 24.08 acres from Ranchette District and Rural Residential District to Agriculture District, and to amend the Comprehensive Plan to change future land use from Ranchette District to Agriculture District. The applicant is Mike Samino, under Nike Harley Properties LLC. Site location is 23054 Mystic Road. With that, staff recommends to continue Rezone 21-04 and Comprehensive Plan Amendment 21-08, sorry, to the June 28, 2021 Planning Commission Meeting.
Thank you. Questions for staff on this item? Noting none. Anyone in the audience wish to speak on this item? Noting none. Staff recommends to continue this item to the June 28, 2021 Planning Commission Meeting. Is there a motion?
I'd make a motion to continue.
Second.
Motion and second for continuing. Further discussion? Noting none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Item 16.
Agenda item number 16 is Rezone 21-14 and Comprehensive Plan Amendment 21-08 to rezone 8.79 acres from Ranchette District to Rural Residential District, and to amend the Comprehensive Plan to change the future land use from Ranchette District to Rural Residential District. The applicant is Mike Gennaro, operating under TDG Real Estate LLC. The agent is DC Scott Surveyors. Site location is east of the intersection of Playhouse Road and Oak Meadow Road. It is vacant of any structures or utilities, and with that, staff recommends to continue Rezone 21-14 and Comprehensive Plan Amendment 21-08 to the June 28, 2021 Planning Commission Meeting.
Thank you. Questions for staff on this item? Noting none. Anyone in the audience wish to speak on this item? Hearing none, seeing none. Staff recommends to continue this item, Rezone 21-14 and CA 21-08 to the June 28, 2021 Planning Commission Meeting. Is there a motion?
I would move to continue.
Second.
Motion and second to continue item to the June 28 Planning Commission Meeting. Further discussion? Seeing none, hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Item 17.
Good morning, Chris Sack, Environmental Planner. Item 17 is Conditional Use Permit CU 21-16. It's to allow a caretaker's residence on the subject property. The applicant is Kyle Brown. The landowner is Martin and Diane Nelson. When approving Conditional Use Permit, there are seven criteria that we look at. The seven criteria on the board, I will read the answers. For number one, a caretaker's residence should not be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare of the public. Number two, this Conditional Use Permit should not change the residential use of the property unless you not have any long-term negative effects on use of enjoyment on other properties in the immediate vicinity. Number three, allowing this Conditional Use Permit should not affect the normal orderly development or improvement of the surrounding vacant property in that area. Number four, the subject property is served by a private onsite wastewater treatment system and water well, and access to the property is provided in approach off of Country Road. Number five, access to the property will be provided in approach off of Country Road. Number six, the current zoning is suburban residential district. Caretaker's residents are allowed in the district with the Conditional Use Permit. Number seven, the future land use of the property is suburban residential district, which allows a single-family residence as a primary use. Caretaker's residents are secondary use that is allowed through a Conditional Use Permit. Currently on the property, there is a single-family residence that was built in 1949, and a 22-by-32 pole shed that was built in 20, or in 2017. The applicant did obtain the variance via 21-04 to allow a double-wide manufactured home as a single-family residence in a 65-to-70 decibel noise level zone. Access to the property is provided off Country Road. There is special flood hazard on area on the property, 100-year floodplain. However, the proposed mobile home will be outside of the floodplain. This was routed around for interdepartmental review. The only comment of concern came from County Highway, who said that the existing approach must be used. That was made a condition. The applicant, Kyle Brown, has requested a Conditional Use Permit for a double-wide mobile home to use as a caretaker's residence. A doctor's note stating care is needed for the applicant's grandmother, Diane Nelson, has been submitted to the Planning Department. Staff found no other concerns relative to this request. Therefore, staff is recommending approval of Conditional Use Permit CU 21-16 with eight conditions.
Thank you. Questions for staff on this item? Seeing none. Does anyone in the audience wish to speak on this item? Seeing none. Staff recommends approval of Conditional Use Permit 21-16 with eight conditions. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. Further discussion? Seeing none, hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Item 18.
Item 18 is Preliminary Plat PPL 21-17 to subdivide and create lots 5A and 5B of Loud subdivision. The landowners Keith and Loona Lau. The surveyors, DC Scott Surveyors. Currently, as the property sits, there's a 54-by-28 farm utility building that was built in 1958 with a 54-by-15 addition also built in 1958. There's a double-wide manufactured mobile home with an attached garage, uncovered patio. They received a building permit in 2015 for that, and a 20-by-10 prefabricated storage shed in 2016. They applied for a building permit in 2021. There is an onsite wastewater treatment system. Access to the property is via Iciga Road. There is no special flood hazard area that exists on the properties. For the proposed lots, 5A will be 3.32 acres, zoned rural residential district, and it will contain all of the structures that were previously, or currently on the property. Lot 5B of Loud subdivision will be one acre, zoned rural residential district. The lot size variance or rezone will be required, and it will be vacant of any structures. This was routed around for interdepartmental review. County Highway Department came back and said access to both blocks would be from the shared approach on the 33-foot wide road easement. The road easement is labeled on the plat, and it was made a condition that they use that easement. I stated to rezone, the lot size variance is required for Lot 5B, and percolation profile information is also required for Lot B or subdivision regulation variance to waive these requirements. Staff finds no significant issues with the applicant's request. It appears to be in harmony with existing lots and the current land use in the area, so staff is recommending approval of PPL 21-05 with seven conditions.
Thanks, Cody. My question was, when I reviewed this, it says there's references to Lot 6, not only in the analysis, but in some of the conditions, Lot, Condition Number 4. Should that be something else?
Yeah, should be Lot 5, 5A and 5B. I believe what happened was, is when they applied for their layout plan, it was originally 5 and 6, and when they came in with their preliminary plat, it changed, and staff didn't catch that change.
So, so the item number 4, they'll need to do a rezone and lot variance, lot size variance request for proposed lot?
5B.
5B?
5B.
Okay. I think that's the only ones that I caught in the, in the conditions. The other ones were just the description and the analysis. Thank you. Further questions for staff? Go ahead.
Cody, and you weren't around when this originally came up. This used to be just one piece property. It was platted a number of years back. I was on the commission then, and it was very, very contentious. In fact, Catherine, when we talked about this on the layout, wondered why there's a separate road when there's a road sitting right there, the Wheaton Road, why there is a separate road, and that's all over the feelings that existed with that neighborhood. And now we have, and I know for a fact that the gentleman that's right alongside what's going to be the new 5B, which is a long lot now, he was one of them that was opposed to it and had made comments at that time. And my concern is, here we are a number of years later, and I remember Mr. Lau standing right there and saying, "This is it." There was even water service problems at that time from Sanders Water Company, if I remember right, because they did not want this taken down to more spots. And Mr. Lau said he wanted this entire lot for his back there. And what finally broke it was when they came in with this separate road, and we agreed to have side-by-side access. We got our Highway Department, because that's not a normal thing either. Two accesses immediately alongside of each other. In fact, they have rules against it. I really hate to see this coming in. I brought it up last time. There's a lot of information on this. Now, we do see these smaller lots over to the right here, and I didn't look to see which direction that is, but anyway, to the right, I guess it is to the east, if you're out there. I went out and looked at this again. But the rest of them that across the road, they're more in the three-acre area, and now we've got, breaking out one piece, and I know it's going to go to rezone and, or a variance, but I don't know why we do these things. In other words, this gentleman applied a number of years ago, and I'll bet it took, it took darn near two years to get it done with the fighting that was going on. And he said, "Oh, this is it." I sat right here and listened to it. And now we are coming back with one acre. That's either to sell it off, or we have some special use. But the idea of subjecting that gentleman that's right next door to him, who finally agreed to that, of having a place could be stuck right out his front window, I find that repulsive. So I just want to say, I just, I'm not in agreement with breaking out one acre when the history, do we keep those files that far back, Brittany? The history on this shows this is not a very kind thing to do right now.
It appears-
See, the rezone and our variance, that's going to be big time when they notify them again out there. These people got hot about that. You just did, how many places have you seen a road alongside a road? He's going to have to extend that road now again to get to the one acre. I'm just bringing up what I know to be good history on this thing, and this is not very good. Could you turn your light off on your phone, please? Thank you.
The landowner appears to have changed his mind on what he wants to do.
Apparently. And I realize you can go through this process without those neighbors coming in. I do know that the neighbor that's alongside the one acre, he's aware of it. I don't know about the rest of people, and I do not know about the water company. I would think the water company, unless they're in better shape than they were last time, is not very happy about another new hookup either. That's the Sanders deal. I think they'd still pump out of Rapid Creek, if I remember right.
And those items will come up?
Yeah, they will come up again and rezone, and yes, that's correct, Mr. Chair. Thank you. But I'm just saying, we put these things ahead, and we don't put this stuff on the table so that people have something to look at. Thank you.
Further questions? Anyone in the audience wish to speak on this item? Okay. Staff is recommending approval of Preliminary Plat PPL 21-05 with seven conditions, noting that number four is Lot 5B, not Lot 6. Is there, is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? No second? So, item, Agenda item 18 will die for lack of second. Explain the process so I'm familiar with what goes back to the landowner on this item.
So the recommendation would go forward to the Board of Commissioners with essentially not an approval? It's essentially a failure because there was no recommendation for approval?
So the board would, could take action on it then without our recommendation?
Yes. Because, yes.
All right.
Whatever moves forward, whatever action that this Planning Commission has moves forward to the Board of Commissioners. So they would consider, you know, whether you recommend denial, or there was no recommendation because that-
It failed for lack of second.
And that's what would be in the minutes, is that what you would have in the minutes?
I just have a question because you have to have four permit to?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, we didn't have any recommendation, or we have no-
Yeah, so then it would just be that what it's, it was moved to approve and died for lack of second, so there's no, there's no approval.
Nothing.
Recommendation?
Mm-hmm.
Understood. Thank you. We'll move on to item 19.
Item 19 is Layout Plan LPL 21-19. It's to reconfigure lot lines to create lots 6R and 7R of Pine Meadow subdivision. The applicant is Thomas Berry. The surveyor is Britain Engineering. Currently, as the properties sit, the property to the south, the 22879, has a single-family residence that was built in 1971 with a residential addition in 1998, which they received a building permit for. There is also a 13-by-16 guest cottage with no building permit, and an 18-by-20 tool shed with no building permit. The lot to the north is vacant of any structures. Access to the properties are provided off of Pine Meadows Court. For flood hazard area, there is special flood hazard area, the 100-year floodplain, and includes floodway. For the proposed lots, Lot 6R will be the lot to the north. It'll be 0.965 acres and vacant of any structure. It is currently on community water, therefore it can go under the one-acre lot size requirement required by the state per septic. And Lot 7R will be 1.405 acres and will contain all the existing structures. This was routed around for interdepartment comments. There were no major comments or concern received, and County Highway had no comments. Rezone or lot size variance is required for both lots, and building permits are required for the guest cottage and tool shed. Conditional Use Permit is also required for the guest cottage. Other than that, staff finds no significant issues with the applicant's request. It appears to be in harmony with the existing lots and current land uses in the area, so staff is recommending approval of LPL 21-19 with 16 conditions.
Thank you. Are there questions for staff on this item?
One question I had in looking at the pictures, are they just moving the lot line? Because it appears like the lot line is near something kind of on the edge of the lot there and/or cuts through it?
Yeah. It's, it looks like a garden or a fence. The current owner's selling the property, so the lot line's moving 25 feet to the north to cover that.
Got it. Yeah, that's what the picture indicated. Just curious. Just all thank you. Further questions for staff?
Were the build, the guest cottage and tool shed, two tool shed, excuse me, that were built with no building permit, were they built by the owner?
I'm not 100% sure they were built after 1994, after the zoning ordinance, and I'm not sure when the current owner assumed ownership of the property. But since they were built after 1994, they require permits. But since they were built after nineteen ninety-four, they require permits.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
So, I'm always concerned when people end up buying property such as this, and maybe we're not aware that there was not building permits. I understand on this one, they are aware of it, that the new owners are aware of it. But I'm always concerned when, when somebody gets stuck paying for building permits and may require additional work, how that should have been done by previous owners. And as I'm, what I'm hearing Cody say is if these buildings were actually built before ninety-four, building, building permits before ninety, were not required.
Yeah, so in, in nineteen ninety-four is when we adopted our zoning ordinance. So, anything prior to that, um, would be grandfathered, but since these structures were built after nineteen ninety-four, um, a building permit would be required for those structures.
So, how do you determine when they were built?
Equalization. If you go on Equalization's website, they put down the year that it was, it was constructed. Um, I didn't put the exact years in here, but I know that they were after nineteen ninety-four. I believe in the two thousands, early two thousands. We can put it in, so there are conditions that they get the conditional use permit and that they get the, the building permits for it. We could do that prior to moving into or recording the plat at registered deeds. That way that the current owner would be responsible for those, taking care of those permits before it's sold.
Okay. Further questions? It, I, I guess just a comment, it, it appears that that's a common thing. Um, well, someone will buy a piece of property. It'll have dated structures on it. They'll come in, they'll want to do something slightly different. That then triggers a review. No one was aware that these things were done in the, you know, absence of any permits, and, and lo and behold, then they're responsible. So, yeah, it's an unfortunate, uh, path, but, um, something that, uh, I would say that we see appear more, more often than not, so. Further questions on this item? Does anyone in the audience wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, hearing none, staff recommends approval of layout plan LPL twenty-one dash nineteen with sixteen conditions. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. Further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Item, uh, twenty.
Item twenty is minor plot MPL twenty-one dash twenty. It is to reconfigure lot lines to create lots one and two of Russell subdivision. The applicant is Daleen Luan Russell, uh, the surveyor's Ferber Engineering, Dave Muck. Currently, as the property sit, uh, tax ID seventy-six-four-two is vacant many properties. There is floodway on the, located on the property. Tax ID seven-oh-six-four-three is vacant many structures with floodway on the property. Seven-oh-six-fourty-four is vacant many structures with floodway, floodway on the property. Tax ID seven-zero-six-four-five is vacant many structures with floodway on the property. And tax ID one-oh-six-seven-three, uh, has two single family residences that were built in nineteen twenty and nineteen twenty-eight per Department of Equalization records. A sixteen by twenty-four detached garage that was built in nineteen sixty-seven, or twenty-five by twenty-four detached garage that was built in nineteen seventy-four, and eighteen by eighteen attached garage that was built in nineteen twenty-eight, and then eighteen by eighteen tool shed that was built in nineteen twenty-eight. Uh, currently access to the property is off Forest Road. There is special flood hazard that exists on the property. For proposed lot, for proposed lot one, it'll be zone suburban residential district, one point three acres with floodway located on the property. It will contain one single family residence and the twenty-five by twenty-four detached garage. Lot two is going to be zone suburban residential district with four point five acres. Uh, floodway is also located on the property. It will contain the other single family residents, the sixteen by twenty-four detached garage and the eighteen by eighteen tool shed garage. This was rather on for interdepartment review. There were no major comments or concerns back in county, the county highway department had no major concerns. On December fifteenth, twenty twenty, the Board of Commissioners approved layout plan LPL twenty dash forty with fifteen conditions. It appears that all those conditions have been met. Uh, the applicant will need to improve or dedicate a portion of the section line right away or obtain the subdivision regulation variance to, to waive that requirement. Uh, staff is recommending approval of MPL twenty-one dash twenty-one with eight conditions.
Eight or five?
Sorry.
I count five.
Five. I flipped the wrong report.
All right. Thank you. Questions for staff on this one? Hearing none. Go ahead, Charlie.
Then the section line, just help me out here on the drawing that was submitted. The section line, it must be where the Forest Road setup comes through there on the backside of both of the new lots.
Correct. It's on the western side of the property lines.
Tough one to expect them to dedicate and develop that, but they sure cleaned up. I would think the county's tickled to death with losing all these little parcels and getting them into too nice, uh, usable and taxable that it, it makes a better situation, I think, for both the owner and the county. Thank you.
Further discussion? Does anyone in the audience wish to speak on this item? Noting none, staff recommends approval of minor plan LPL twenty-one dash twenty with five conditions. Is there a motion?
I saw a move.
Second.
Motion and second. Further discussion? Seeing none, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Item twenty-one.
Item twenty-one is layout plan LPL twenty-one dash twenty-one. It's to subdivide and create tracks one and two and well lot of Policki subdivision. The landowner and applicant is Catherine Policki and the surveyor's baseline surveying. Currently, as the property sits, there is a single family residence with a, a barn, uh, sixteen by forty feeder shed and two garages that are forty-eight by sixty-four and forty-eight by thirty. There are two onsite waste, wastewater treatment systems on the property. Access off the property is via High Seega Road. There is no flood hazard area on the property. Uh, for the proposed, for the proposed lots, uh, tract one will be twenty-three point eight-five acres and will contain all of the current structures and the onsite wastewater treatment systems. Tract two will be six point one-two acres and leave vacant many structures, and the well lot will be zero point zero-two-one acres. This was rather on for interdepartment review. Uh, there were two comments of concern coming from county highway that an approach permit must be obtained and from registered deeds that the plat book and page information in the formulary should be removed. Uh, percolation profile, whole information and improvement or dedication of the section line will be required, um, for tract two, and then the section line will be required for both tract one and tract two. Uh, subdivision regulations variance will be required if the applicant chooses to waive these requirements. As for a layout plan, staff finds no significant issues with applicant's requests. It appears to be in harmony with existing lots and current land uses in the area. So, staff is recommending approval of layout plan LPL twenty-one dash twenty-one with eight conditions.
Thank you. Questions for staff on this item? And the question I had is, is that county highway is requiring an access permit to go to lot, or tract two, excuse me. What about the well lot? Will there be, and what, what sort of access is required to get to that?
I'm not sure. I'd have to research and, just a, just an easement would have to be dedicated.
Okay. Is the well going to service both track, uh, tract one and tract two?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. Questions on this item?
So, as part of the conditions, you're not, uh, recommendations, you're not requiring that second approach as recommended by highway? Or second, maybe it's not a second approach. Maybe it's just a, uh-
It would just, it would just be a single approach to the proposed, the new proposed lot two. If it was, if it was subdivided, it'd just be a single approach. That could be handled when the, the building permit, when they apply for the building permit, that approach permit would be required.
Yeah. I think, maybe I'm misunderstanding, but is your question, does it need to be added as a, as a condition of approval? Does that need to be added as a condition of approval?
It absolutely could be, yes.
Okay.
Just a comment, Mr. Chair, but if you look at that picture, I'm sure the highway department, just above where this new lot, tract two is, is an approach, and just below the bottom side of it is another approach. So, highway department's going to want some flexibility, I know, on locating that one.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody in the audience wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, um, we will be adding item nine, um, making the approach permit requirement per highway department, um, requirements, uh, stipulation of, or a condition of approval. Staff recommends approval of layout plan LPL twenty-one dash twenty-one with, uh, nine conditions, with the ninth added during this meeting. Is there a motion?
I'd make a motion to that, sir.
Second.
Motion and second. Further discussion? Seeing none and hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Item twenty-two.
Item twenty-two is conditional use permit CU twenty-one dash eighteen. It's to allow a temporary campground slash assembly of people on the subject property for four days during the month of July. The, it's a little cold. This was continued from the April twenty-sixth, uh, twenty twenty-one Planning Commission meeting with concerns over, uh, the pumping on the second day for, for septic, uh, what specific dates every year that the, um, camp is going to be ran, and how many RVs or pop-up campers were going to be provided. Uh, the applicant, uh, talked with the church who's going to be running the, the, the camp. Um, it'll be the third weekend of every July, so the first full day camp will be the third Saturday. Uh, this year it'll be on July seventeenth and end on the twentieth, on July twentieth, um, and will be the third weekend in July of every subsequent year. You received a attachment from the Department of Agriculture, Environment, and Natural Resources who, um, don't have much to say on whether it's pumped on the second day or third day, as long as it's pumped and the system doesn't fail. If it fails, they'll require the, the applicant to upgrade his, his system. And talking with the applicant for the number of RVs and tent sites, there'd be, on, there's on average, six to eight, so we went with eight RV sites and eight tent sites because the applicant, um, stated that usually there's a tent site with every RV site because some kids like to sleep in the tent and some like to sleep in the RV. This was rather on for interdepartment review. County Highway Department has no comments since it's in the Naughty Pine Road District. The Naughty Pine Road District President did contact us after the last meeting, um, and stated that there was no representative from the Naughty Pine Road District that was voted upon to come speak at the meeting on behalf of the Naughty Pine Road District, and that they have no opinion on whether the camp should be ran. They would just provide information on the road, which the road is, is a public, uh, public right-of-way, thirteen to fourteen feet route wide for approximately point six miles. Uh, therefore, staff is recommending approval of conditional use permits CU twenty-one dash eighteen with sixteen conditions.
Thank you. Are there questions for staff on this item? Seeing none. I do have some speaker request forms, uh, on this item. First one I have is, uh, Patrick Briesmeister.
I, I sent some Thursday, so there should be like six or seven more.
I never-
Mr. Chairman?
I never received one.
Go ahead.
So, this was up before the planning commission earlier. Was it just simply continued or did you receive testimony at that time?
We received testimony at that time. Uh, we, we've received testimony, I believe, several, well, um, the, the last, the last meeting, um, and then we received, uh, an email, um, last week, and then, um, it was continued until this meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Are we missing some pictures or information?
I, I never received any, any pictures or anything. Okay. She, Brittany's going to run and see if they were sent to the PLZ one email.
Go ahead.
Colm McNeice, State's Attorneys. Thank you, Mr. Chair. To facilitate having the pictures for Mr. Briesmeister's presentation, perhaps we could take the next speaker request? And then once, if Brittany's able to print them off, then provide them to the board, the public packet, um, so then everybody can be on the same page?
Sure. I think that's acceptable. You okay with that, Mr. Briesmeister?
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm more than fine. I just, it's just more pictures of the road and to try and help you guys get a visual of what a twenty-foot access really means versus what they've done to property.
Yeah. Okay. Noted. Next, uh, speaker request form is a, a Tim, uh, Demo? Demo? Is that correct, sir? Yeah, please come forward.
Yeah. I just wanted to come and say that-
Go ahead and state your name for the record, and then will, will you be testifying too?
Yes, I'm Kathy Demo.
Okay.
Yeah. Yes.
Go ahead.
I'm Tim Demo, and this is my wife, my, my wife Kathy Demo, and we're, we're just here to say that, that we approve of, of the, the, our permit and, um, you know, we, we live just, just south of, of Patrick's property, uh, so as the robe, robe comes down and swoops, we're, we're south of that. So, they would go by, by our place too. But, um, and just if there's any, any questions, anybody has or anything?
Okay. Is there any questions, uh, for, for, uh, Mr. and Mrs. Demo?
I think I understand where your property is, um, as, as, as the, as the road kind of swings back up towards the north and, and goes to Mr. Colp's property. You, you guys are off to the left there, south of it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Right there, we're in, well, like, in the, in the square where it says one point, or one point four, one fifty-nine.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Further questions? Well, we thank you for coming.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I would just like to say that I know that he's had the camp there before, and actually, I never even knew it was going on, so it's not a, you know, it's not a big deal. It's never been a big deal. We, we have campers too that go down the road, so we have never had any issue with anybody until now.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thanks.
So, Brittany just texted Jason and said that there's nothing in the PLZ email for pictures that were sent.
Did they get hung up in the email server then? Is that what happened?
I guess I'm not one hundred percent sure.
Do you know how big the email was? That, normally emails greater than five megabytes typically get hung up.
Pictures, but it took it, it sent it, and it said, have these pictures available to discuss on Monday night.
Well, they are hung up.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Mr. Briesmeister, if you can send those again, uh, then perhaps they'll go through this time and we'll be able to print them off, so the planning commission and the public can have access to those as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak on this item?
Michael Jacob. Do you want to break?
Cool. Yeah, we can-
It, it may not come across again if a fire one protection ever, but it's, okay? Or to send, so I, I don't, I don't know what you want to apologize.
I, I think as a, just as a, um, to try to accommodate, uh, the information that you have, Mr. Briesmeister- Mr. Briesmeister, we'll, we'll take a ten-minute recess here and we'll, we'll come back in ten minutes and try to, try to get the information accordingly. Any concerns with that?
We also could, if it won't come through again, we could also go to the, take it out of item and go where our building permit report and come back to give it the time to go ahead and take.
Change, change the order?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I agree. I think let's just take it, I think let's just take a ten-minute recess and, and we'll be back. Ten minutes to allow for the information to come forth. Mics are back on. Brittany, I think we're going to try to work in parallel here and, and maybe move this item. We'll finish the speaker requests maybe and then, or we'll hold tight on those and maybe move this item, table this item down further in the agenda just so we can keep things moving while we're getting the printed copies. So my apologies to everyone in the audience that's here to speak on this item. We will keep moving down the list and come back to it. So I guess just to make sure we're all on the same page, we'd like to table item twenty-two and move it to below item twenty-four. Does that sound reasonable to everybody? Can I, I don't know if I need a motion for that or if we can just do that, but.
I'd make that motion.
That we table item number twenty-two until after discussion ends on item twenty-four.
Motion and second to table item twenty-two and move it to below item twenty-four, the county board report. Further discussion. Hearing none, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We are now on item twenty-three.
Item twenty-three is comprehensive plan amendment C A twenty-one dash zero-seven to amend comprehensive plan view to twenty forty. Comprehensive plan, section three-point-one land use designations and standards, figure three dash one future land use map on page three dash fifteen. This is to incorporate the updated future land use map as page three dash fifteen and figures three dash one of the Pennington Counties view to twenty comprehensive plan. The reason for this update in the map is that during the time from two thousand seventeen to two thousand twenty, when the comprehensive plan was being heard, there was future land use amendments and we wanted to make sure that these were incorporated appropriately in the new comprehensive plan document. So that's to update those.
Thank you. Further questions for staff on this item? My question is, so the item that we approved last week was, was the updated map, but this updated map makes sure that all the future land use amendments were incorporated from twenty seventeen to twenty twenty?
Correct, because our old future, old future land use, not on the view to twenty forty, was the one that were updated during those re-zones and comprehensive plan amendments. And we just wanted to ensure that those amendments were taken into consideration under the new zoning districts and the new considerations so the future land use didn't go back.
Okay.
Stay moving forward.
Will, will there be any other amendments regarding this item coming forth or should this be, this will be it?
This will be it. And then as they move forward with individual requests, like we see, you know, with the re-zones, those will be separate and then this map will be continually updated through that process.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Just for the, the average citizen here in our digital age and everything, will folks still be able then to get a hard copy of what they're dealing with on a comprehensive plan? In other words, for their area, how, do they do that through you or will they get it? Well, if they didn't have a computer, they couldn't get it, but so they have to get it through you. But other people, they'll drag it down from the site or what?
Um, they, yes, they can get it off a rapid map. So our official is an electronic through rapid map. So when we go in and update these, when we go into the program, we update the, the re-zones and future land use based on approvals from this board and the Board of County Commissioners. That's updated in the rapid map and then each night, you know, those are updated and then they show on their effective dates. So people can come in and get copies of those maps.
And then effectively it'll be on the particular copy they bring down, in other words.
Well, we have it. So when you click on your parcel, it'll say like the rezone, the zoning, or the future land use, and then it'll have a date that it was effective. So everybody that rezones their property will have a new effective date. So just like currently on the ones now, if you rezoned in nineteen ninety-four, those had a ninety-four date. If you rezoned, you know, periodically through that time, you could have rezoned in oh-one, you could have rezoned in oh-three, it'll have that date on it. So it, it's basically when you click on the parcel.
Maybe I didn't understand something. But the person, if they drag it down, they'll have an effective date on that copy that they dragged down? Or does it just on one spot on the total map?
It's one spot on the parcel. It's on the parcel report. It would be in there.
If there's any way digital-wise you can add it to the, anything they dragged down, I, I think it would help you confusion-wise because there are people will leave, you know, how people set things to the side and they don't get to it for a while and they say, well, that was all clear and here it's two months down the road.
Right.
At least there's an effective date on the copy they were looking at is all I was getting at.
Okay.
Thank you, Brittany.
Further questions for staff on this item? Seeing none, does anyone in the audience wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, noting none. Staff's recommendation is for approval of comprehensive plan amendment C A twenty-one dash zero-seven. Is there a motion?
I'd make that motion.
Second.
Motion and second for approval of comprehensive plan amendment twenty-one dash zero-seven. Further discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Brings us to the county board report.
The county board report, the Board of Commissioners concurred with the Planning Commission's recommendations from the April twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-one Planning Commission meeting.
Anything to add to that? No? Okay. We are again on item twenty-two that was previously tabled. So, Mr. Briesmeister, if you want to come up, we can, I believe that we have your photos not only in, in hard copy as well as electronically up there.
And again, my, my apologies for this, let's see, okay, this is a good place to start. My name is Pat Briesmeister. Thank you for allowing me to, to speak. This is my property. The easement that allows public access, the majority of it goes through my property and then extends further down, actually through Cole Foster's property and, and further down. But the, the whole question for, for everybody here was the twenty-foot easement, what that means, why, what was the intent and what really does a twenty-foot easement constitute when you take in consideration the actual road surface and proper drainage? So while there is no written rule about a twenty-foot easement, I did a little bit of research and called the original people that owned my property and said, well, why didn't you make the road twenty feet wide to begin with? And she said, we did. And I said, well, what do you mean? And, and I said, it's not twenty feet anywhere. She goes, well, with proper drainage over time, it, it definitely was up to, you know, the, the normal standard that most contractors or, or road construction people would do. So I asked Ron Resnick to, to, because he's in this business and I, and he's the one that drew this for me, and basically said, you know, on average, you're going to get somewhere around fourteen feet of surface and, and, you know, three feet on each side with drainage. Over the years, and, and I wanted to show you what that really looks like, and none of these are out of order, so hold on a second, bear with me. This is the extension of Stone Ridge Road. So where you see it end into the B and B, if you went left there, you can see the road. That's what this picture is because our neighbors, our neighbors actually paid for the reconstruction of a twenty-foot easement for the individual that lives at the end of Stone Ridge Road. She's a full-time college student with two kids. So they went ahead and as you can see from this picture that it very clearly shows, you know, you can come to your own conclusion as far as what the intent is. It, it's a single lane easement with the proper drainage and so forth. So let's see if I have another picture. There's the other picture. So you can see with the quad there how wide a true twenty-foot easement with proper drainage should be. And it's unfortunate that over the two years that I allowed the road district, that's just a picture depicting what a two-lane road looks like going into the easement with public use, which is the start of, of my wife and I's land. So you can see what, what and why the, the whole intent was. So this is what happens when people for, that don't really understand what a twenty-foot easement really means and, and a road district that really didn't understand it either. No blame, no harm. I didn't really understand it to the fullest, but now my neighbors, last time we were here, offered to widen the road and fix the road the way it should be and I hope that still stands that they'll contribute to putting the road back so, so it has proper drainage and, and it is meet the standards because it's a mess. And it, you know, it, it does impede on above and beyond the twenty feet that is allowed for them to access. And I've got another picture. And that, that's just a, an elongated picture of the contractor who just did what he, what he was told to by the ex-president of the road district and input from other neighbors to say, you know, we have a twenty-foot wide easement. Well, yeah, you do, but not like that. So, you know, the road is what it is, but I just wanted to, to make sure folks knew what truly a foot or a twenty-foot easement meant. And, you know, obviously for low traffic, yes, there can be RVs and so forth. Neighbors do own them, no problem. But to have constant traffic, the road never was intended to be built for that, never should be, should have been done to what it's been done to, to try and squeeze twenty feet of road surface, but it did. So that's that. The other thing, I appreciate everybody modifying the recommendations. Can we make sure the recommendations actually state the dates? Again, this is a year renewal, so it's great to know that it, it's in conjunction with the Hills Alive concert, the third weekend of July, but it, the, your own zoning ordinance does state actual dates. We gave two weeks to get the dates. So if we can make sure the recommendation states four P.M. on the sixteenth to noon on the twentieth, that would be appreciated. The other question I have, and, and thank you again for limiting the RVs and tents, and is that sixteen total over the four days or sixteen at any one given time? So in other words, one night, you know, it can swap out and the next night, I, I've got eight more other RVs coming in, et cetera. Can, can we put some parameters around that, please, to help everybody understand the amount of traffic that's going to happen on this road? And my last thing is, again, you say you're going to abide by the, the laws, you know, of fire. I don't care what show you watch these days. We're in severe drought. I would really appreciate it if you just put a recommendation in there and say no fires at all and leave it. It, it isn't going to get any better. The, the news weather forecasters are stating it isn't going to get any better. And just to clarify and, you know, this way people don't have to try and go and read laws and interpret laws because we've had trouble with that for a long time in our neighborhood. So it would be appreciated if we could just say no fires during the sixteenth through the twentieth. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there questions for Mr. Briesmeister?
Yeah, just, Patrick, from the pictures, I'm glad we got the pictures. You guys with your limited budget have done a good job out there and then you did a good job explaining the, the drainage as well as the fact that when you do the proper drainage, sometimes you're over the twenty-foot easement that was allowable. But if it had more bridges and more water in that short distance, I'd, I'd be more concerned than the pictures I see here. They actually helped me and made me feel more comfortable about people attempting to, to navigate the road.
Well, and, and that's only because nobody knew and understood what twenty-foot meant. So for lack of a better term, they manipulated the twenty feet to their benefit and we're going to move that and, and we're going to have a lot of discussions at the road district level of who pays for that. But it, it's a shame that neighbors wouldn't come and, and ask and, and man up and say, hey, I'd like to do this. Do you have any problems? And we would have learned a couple of years ago, all this that we're learning now, but because we are where we are, we got to go different routes to, to figure out what the best thing to do is.
Okay. And I think generations after you and I'll improve on the road. There is, when you said naming the dates, I guess I didn't have a concern. The way they wrote it now, it does say the third week of July. And I think that's so that the people can come back here for a renewal. And if it's, remains a third week, only in the condition that it switched the week, right? They'd have to modify.
Again, I think it's based on the Hills Alive Festival and, and coincides with that.
Might be booking. There's a lot of things. But I'm saying then they'd have to come back and modify that. The way Cody's going to tell me what I'm missing here.
So, so as the condition reads, it says that the camp operates the third weekend of July. So the camp could only operate the third weekend of July and it'll be reviewed June of twenty twenty-two, whatever meeting it goes on. So at that meeting, at that review, we'll solidify the dates for that year.
Right. And if it becomes the fourth weekend, then obviously you'll switch that condition.
It would have to change, yep, but it would be, it'd be out of hearing like this.
We're all going to sit here and listen again.
Yeah. And, and I just wanted to clarify that your own ordinance is say specific dates and that's why I brought it up. Because he said starting on the seventeenth and it's actually starting on the sixteenth. So I think just for clarification purposes, it's good to have those dates there because your ordinance asks for them.
Patrick, I think the permit does state the exact dates on it. Doesn't it not? The permit they're actually issued states the dates.
So I, I see what he's saying. So the email that I got from the applicant stated that it'll start the third Saturday. So I put the seventeenth. It should say the sixteenth. So Mr. Briesmeister is, is correct in that aspect. It should be the, the sixteenth this year. That's where that four P.M. will come in, but the first full day will be the, the seventeenth.
Thank you, Cody.
I want to make sure I'm a hundred percent clear. Conditions say third weekend in July, third weekend in July of this, and, and they further state that it starts at four P.M. on Friday and it goes to noon on Tuesday. This year, that would be four P.M. on Friday the sixteenth until noon on Tuesday the twentieth. Next year, it would be whatever those dates are with the third weekend with, with the following Friday and, and Tuesday, and that'll be reviewed on June of next year to confirm if there's any changes to that.
Correct.
To answer Mr. Briesmeister's question about the RVs and, and the tent sites, the testimony that we heard a few weeks ago did not indicate that there would be people switching out the RVs and, and tent sites every day of the camp, but this is eight RVs total, eight tent sites total. Eight tents, eight RVs.
Correct. You can't, you can't have nine RVs and, and seven tents. It's eight RVs, eight tents.
Okay.
But, but can they have eight different RVs and eight different tents per night as an example?
They can have eight total RVs on site at any given time.
He's saying can they swap them out every day?
Right. So I could have twenty-four actual RVs coming over three days instead of eight. Right, so I could have 24 actual RVs coming over three days instead of eight.
I I mean, if if we wanna get that specific and say eight of the same RVs, w- we we can. I don't see that. I don't see eight people coming in one day, eight people coming in the next day, eight people.
Patrick, it does say the sites, and the sites would be the number who's on the site is not involved.
But Commissioner Charlie, this is temporary, so they don't run it like a campground. They just kind of go wherever you want to go on my 30 acres going camp.
All I'm getting is I don't think you're gonna look over and see 24, because if you see 24, they're in violation.
I I get that, but they could conceivably on the road, and that's my concern, is the road and the amount, the use of the road and the amount of traffic on the road, that i- it wouldn't just be eight trailers and eight tenters coming in on a Friday and leaving on a Tuesday. I could have daily traffic of of tenters and campers going in and out because of the transition of what a campground is. It could be a nightly campground. This again is people coming in from all over the US, coming to a Hills, a Alive concert. And then they're just happening to, you know, do a little bit more for for their person or their group.
Patrick, I think that gets beyond our capability as a planning commission to police. Um, if we've limited the sites from there and use of the road, probably we'll end up with the homeowners in the road district. We've limited the sites, and that's the way I would see that we should appropriately try to do it in your behalf as well as an applicant's behalf.
All I can do is ask. Thank you very much.
Go ahead, Cody. Did you have something? All right. Um, next speaker request forum we have is is Cole Foster.
Good morning. Uh, I'll make it short. So, um, I was on my way back from Montana going home and I actually met Commissioner Ron on the road and passed him without problems. I was pulling an equipment trailer behind my pickup. Um, and I guess I don't see what the big deal is. Uh, it's four days a year. Um, I'm totally fine with it. And like I said, it happens directly next to my house, and I've never had an issue. And they've always went above and beyond as far as safety measures, things like that, and so.
Okay.
Okay, that's all I have, so.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Foster? Okay. Um, I I have a question, uh, for the applicant. So are are you willing to come up and?
Yes, sir.
You're you're, uh, Mr. Breeze Meister, your neighbor is is concerns about the RVs and the and the tent sites swapping out. I don't believe that's what I understood your testimony to be two weeks ago regarding this issue.
You are correct.
I wanna conf- so that being said, would you be opposed under, uh, under the conditional use permit items? Item number seven states that the camp will be limited to eight RVs and eight tent sites. I'd like to add these words to the end of that for the subject weekend.
Say that again, please. I didn't understand it.
You, we, there's a stipulation in here that says that the camp will be limited to eight RVs and eight tent sites. And it doesn't say anything else. I would like to add the following words that says for the subject weekend.
Yes, that would be fine.
Okay, thank you. I I have no further questions.
I I have one.
Oh, you have one? I'm sorry, mister.
And this would be for any citizen of the Black Hills. I I sure, uh, uh, share with Patrick, because I live up in the hills too, uh, the concern for fire danger and limit of, uh, personal fire. We do have a lot of people that come in our area, and you're aware of it. You've probably followed people up through the hills throwing cigarettes out the window. I I see this constantly during the rally, uh, going home. Anything you could do in the way of signage or on your sign-up sheets to to talk about fire would be greatly appreciated from me as a commissioner or a citizen, because it is a serious thing. And I think we're gonna have a dry year from the looks of it in the area. So it would be definitely behoove us all.
Yes, I'm, uh, we're completely on board with that. Um, in a dry year, when the instructions go out to the people who are coming to the camp, it's one of the things I tell them is no fires this year because the hills are dry. Assuming we know that in a week, a couple of weeks in advance, when we usually do.
Thank you, Lo.
Okay.
Thank you. Further, um, further discussion on this item. Does anyone else wish to speak on this item? Okay. Um, staff is recommending approval of conditional use permit 21-18 with, um, 16 conditions, um, noting that item number seven, um, the the words for the subject weekend were added to that condition. Is there a motion?
It's all moved.
Motion for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Further discussion?
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to clarify the amendment that you proposed. Does that go with the goal of limiting it to the first eight RVs and then only eight, those eight? And same with the tents?
The the for the subject weekend is is that there's only eight RVs and eight tent sites for the third weekend in July. Total. It's to try to come to the a compromise between Mr. Breeze Meister's concern about him swapping out the tents and RVs every day for the four days. So the the intent and clarification there is is that, uh, when the R eight RVs and eight tent sites show up for that weekend, they're there for that weekend, and they're and it's not meant to be a a a revolving door, if you will, every day for the three or four days.
So it's meant to limit it to the first eight of tents and RVs?
Correct.
Uh, if I may, I think it would be more clear if you were to say the first eight. So there are so something to the effect of there are a total of eight spots for RVs, eight spots for tents that will be filled on a first come, first served basis. After eight, no more are allowed. And they cannot be replaced or something.
That that goes along with what what I was trying to accomplish with Mr. Breeze Meister and and the applicant. And I guess I would just want to confirm with the applicant that he he is agreeable to, uh, that as stated. Mr. Kolb, if you could come up.
Yes, I am. Uh, we've had not, we haven't had anybody swap out. If, uh, if they're not gonna be there for the whole four days, then, um, they're not replaced. So what you suggested is perfectly, uh, fine with us.
Thank you, sir. So I I'll accept your friendly, uh, amendment to my wordage then. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, uh, and I guess I want to make make sure for the motioner and the second that you guys are agreeable to that language as well?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Further discussion on this item? Hearing none, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, no. Motion carries. I believe we are on item 25. Items from the public. Seeing none, I, uh, item 26, items from staff.
Good morning, Commissioners. Uh, item A under items from staff is a building permit report. This month, again, we're above what we were last month. And for the year, um, we're quite a bit higher, especially in the single-family residence and, um, mobile home building permits. So we're kind of keeping in track with, you know, what's kind of been the norm in the in the area as far as housing and building.
Okay.
Any questions?
I have some, but I don't. They're not for the whole group regarding. What are what's it gonna do with all the sales tax?
The actual first permit, you've got, he, Mr. Foster must own another piece of property out there and he's building on it.
Um, no, that was actually as part of his conditional use permit. He had to get a building permit for that finished space, so that was his.
Hadn't been done in the past, so that's why it would be right at the top of the. Thank you.
Yep.
Clarified. Thank you.
Go ahead, next item.
And item B is, uh, just the announcement that there's a special planning commission meeting going to be held on May 17th at 9:00 AM, uh, to address, uh, the medical marijuana cannabis recreational marijuana, ordinances or potential ordinances.
Is there a packet for that?
There will be.
There will be, okay.
Yes.
I won't be able to be here, but I would like to be able to make email comments if I have any.
Sure.
Yeah, I I'm, so I called, um, before we set the special meeting. And as I understand it, both Charlie and Karen are gonna be gone, but everyone else will be here for that meeting. Have you received a lot of inquiries about that meeting?
Um, no, just one, actually. There was only one email yesterday.
Okay.
And I would support that we look at doing a meeting on the type. We'd make rope out of two.
So the the plan is to to hear it on the 17th and then again on the 24th. So, um, if you guys are still going to read, sorry, if both of you are going to be available on the 24th, there'll still be an opportunity to make comments.
Is that because we don't address this in our system? It, you know, how did it come up? I I was surprised when you said the cannabis thing. I thought that was well above our level of.
Well, the state law passed counties such as Pennington County, and I s- I would, I'm speculating, probably don't have ordinance amendments in place or planning and, uh, planning documents in place, let me say, as a general overview.
Or something. That's where I lost contact.
So how there should be, um, guidelines on how close it can be to here, where it can be located. What zoning districts is it located in? Is it okay to have it in residential? You know, those those types of questions and comments, I think, need to be addressed, and and so that's the intent. Probably should be in commercial.
Do you have a document? You're gonna publish it in English? Okay, thank you.
And then Commissioner Johnson, if you're curious about the initiated measure, I believe it was 26 that was passed by the voters, it's available on the South Dakota Legislature's website as 3420G. And you can go through and look. And as, uh, Mr. Chair pointed out, uh, local government can, uh, restrict the permits and then the time, place, manner, and number. So there are a number of things that we have to update for our ordinances. Um, and, um, work in conjunction with the Department of Health, who has to promulgate some rules uh, for licenses on their side, one of which is a condition precedent that if the local government does regulate it through a permit or a license, uh, then that has to be considered as part of their application. So it's a number of different governmental organizations at different levels working together.
Colin, I was being facetious the one I threw in the rope. Because you're aware that every time you bring this issue up versus what was passed, you have two distinct home bases on this. You've got the folks that will believe that it is a, uh, an excellent product to be raised in South Dakota with the terrible land uh, that we have for growing season and, uh, agricultural limitations. On the other hand, we have the people that have medical and recreational use of a product that is similar and that looks the same and whatnot. That's why I brought that up. It it's just that I foresee that we're going to have a an onslaught of the same people that want to to look about raising the other as well. And because once we move in this direction, they're gonna be back. Those folks that wanted to to, uh, do the legalized end of the hemp. So I expect to see we have a fun year after we start to implement some of this.
Well, and we should know more about whether recreational is upheld. The South Dakota Supreme Court heard arguments on that on April 28th. Uh, they recently, this past Thursday, handed down a decision on, um, House Joint Resolution or Joint Resolution 503 that moved a constitutional amendment up that took them about 20 days with expedited briefing. Um, and this case that dealt with recreational marijuana was likewise expedited. So the 20 days would put us at May 18th. Um, so I would expect a decision sometime before July. Um, but I don't know anything. That's just me speculating. But we would know more at that point, and they're similar in kind of the way that they're, um, written. Uh, I don't know whether there was any coordination on either part. I think they were written by separate entities, um, but a lot of it is pretty similar.
Between the, uh, let's say the stance of our governor on the 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 particular item we're talking about as well as the other, uh, and I'm saying, again, I look at them as two separate items. And then the fact that we have a law that should or may, uh, come into effect, I think we're opening the door for those people, again, that see this as a, uh, money maker, not the type we have, not whoopee weed. We're talking about the type that you actually do make products out of. I see them coming back in full force. So I I just wanted to mention, this may not be the only, we may need the whole new section on it.
You may be right, and I would suggest that we leave those conversations for for those items. Let's let's move forward. Planning Commissioners sought?
Yes, there are openings that have been advertised for planning commissioners. Those interviews, uh, will be done this month, and hopefully, um, the recommendations will be in front of the Board of Commissioners in June, um, for them to start the first meeting in July.
Okay. And so we're losing, um, Kathy and who?
Uh, I believe Jim and Sandy are both up.
Okay. All right. Any other items from the staff?
No, not at this time.
Okay. Items from the membership. Charlie, I I indicated that I thought we should discuss the VHR items, um, under this item to keep things rolling. And I just, I want to preface this by saying that we should not discuss any items that were reviewed and discussed in the agenda. Only as specific items to change in the the VHR ordinance, if that's if that's the case. So please keep it within that frame framework.
Agreed. I think what we were talking about just here on the marijuana is a perfect example. We as committee did not look down the road and foresee these other things. We weren't business managers that worried about DBAs, LLCs, or whatever uh, particular governing body had authority to establish that business. We didn't look down that, and everybody understood, believe me, I sat right in all those meetings. Everybody understood the local contact. They were gonna dial seven numbers and get a local person that was in it within 50 miles. They weren't dialing long distance. That's the only reason I threw that one in. But I do think we need to go back and try to add some wording and do a better job for those folks on this sort of issue that's so down the middle in this county as to whether they oppose it or whether they support it. I think we need to do better for both sides on investigating our end. If somebody wasn't in good stead and we turn them into the manager, uh, I think we've opened ourselves up to criticism. Follow me?
So what would what would you like to move forward? Would would, I mean, I'm I'm gonna throw something out. Let me know what you think. I I think that we should print off 319, and if there's items in there that that, and I was here for a lot of those meetings. I remember being here till nine or 10 o'clock for several meetings after hearing, you know, 40, 50 different people talk about the pros and cons on on these items and and how ultimately it it went forward. W- with anything, I don't think something out of the gate is necessarily perfect. So if there's minor tweaks that need to be made, I I think the board here is open to them and and maybe the commission as well. Um, do you suggest that we take section 319 and maybe make some minor edits or some additions that that we've seen after the past few years here? And then, uh, have staff review that and and the state's attorney review that? Or what what process are you looking for here?
I I think the staff, in my mind, as soon, as long as they understand that this is so that we, in good, uh, in good stead, we, for the citizens of the county, are doing a- a- additional review is what I'm asking for. And they write that up. I think tweaking was it was certainly within the authority of this board. I don't think we need to put this all out there. I just think we need to do a a better job of the review process. In other words, this doesn't need to be gone through again. In fact, I think Brittany knows it. Our recreation, uh, home, our our home rental here is one of the best in the state. There's other people look at it. So I think we're already in good stead if we improve on it a little.
Mr. Chair, if I may. Mr. Chair, if I may.
Go ahead.
To speak to Commissioner Johnson's issue with calling long distance, perhaps we could open up the definition section of local ordinance, which I believe is one oh three B one eleven. And incorporate that the local contact must have a local number. We could also perhaps include an email address, so then they can be reached by email as well. Because I know many people nowadays communicate by email quite frequently, me included. And I know a lot of the commissioners as well. As far as the review. When an entity is the applicant, that's already covered in our ordinance under the definition of person, which we copied from the qualified laws. So running that through the South Dakota Secretary of State's website, painless pretty easily. And you can get their reports to see whether they're in good standing with the. South Dakota Secretary of State, as far as like licenses and stuff, I know the use tax and licenses like that, the lodging license, that's already checked. So I think it's already within the ordinances purview to look at that stuff. But as far as the definition, I think including that in to be more specific, so then people will know that you have to have that local contact. Makes sense.
Because I see it, I don't have any problem with our applicant wanting to use ten different names in the process. It's just that we have some responsibility to look at those ten different names. If they're business names, they're not related to the applicant themselves. I think we have a responsibility that they are operating appropriately. Money is involved, money's being collected, sales tax on, and neighbors are affected. So I agree with you as far as the the long distance number, that's fine, I don't care. But if we change our definition such that it's covered, but I do think that our own process does need to check. If there's ten of them, we've got to know who the ten are so that somebody could get to the bottom of something if they had to. Who they are. Thank you.
Okay. Further items from the membership? Seeing none, item twenty-eight, adjournment, is there a motion?
We'll move.
Second.
Motion and second, further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, no. We're adjourned, thanks, everybody.